Good evening and welcome to tonight's council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First thing I'm going to ask for is agenda changes.
Mr. Mayor, staff would request under H, Agenda Item 3, the third quarter financial report be pulled. We are dealing with a reporting issue and our software vendor was unable to fix that in time to generate reports for tonight's meeting for you all. And then, under New Business, adding number four, and that will be discussion of health insurance. And those will be changes from staff.
Discussion of health insurance?
Yes.
Okay, council, everybody good with that? All right, we'll move on. I'll open up for public forum. Is there anybody here wishing to address the council this evening? Seeing no movement from the audience, I'll go ahead and close the public forum. And our first item on our agenda this evening is an executive session, so I would entertain that motion as soon as Ethan's done writing it.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I moved at the Halsted City Council recess into executive session for 20 minutes to discuss pending contract negotiations pursuant to the consult, or pursuant to the consultation with an attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, exception KSA 75, 4319B2. In the asset, in addition to the governing body, the following persons join the governing body in executive session: the city manager, the city attorney, and the city's bond counsel, JT Claus. They'll have a meeting in governing body to reconvene in the city council chamber at 7:22 PM.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn to executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. We will move into executive session in the other room.[147.88]
We are back from our executive session. Is there any action to be taken as a result though? Hearing nothing from the council, we'll continue to move on our agenda. And the next item is I'm gonna ask for the approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, after reviewing the consent agenda as submitted, if there's no questions or discussion, I would make a motion to approve it as submitted.
Second. Have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Same sign. Consent agenda is approved. We have no unfinished business tonight, so we're gonna move right into new business. And the first item is consideration of police vehicle replacement. Looks like Chief Warham is here to address the councils. Welcome, Chief.
Mayor, Council, thank you for allowing me a few minutes here. I'll try and keep it short for you. Here today, requesting approval to purchase a 2021 Dodge Durango and outfitting for the new vehicle. I'll start and back up a little bit. I believe all of you are on the council about three to four years ago when we put in place the take-home vehicle policy and we took our fleet from two vehicles to five vehicles. So now we're at five vehicles and each officer is assigned a vehicle that they can take home as long as they reside within our set policy for the city. Currently, our oldest vehicle is a 2015 Ford F-150. That vehicle is the one we're looking to replace. If approved, this vehicle would transfer to city maintenance and they would take it over for use in their department. The vehicle which I stated before that we're looking to purchase is a 2021 Dodge Durango which would be assigned to an officer on patrol to be used during their daily patrol activities. When looking at this project, we looked at several different options for vehicles and we found some problems with the current, current status of vehicles. One being that we can't get a lot of the vehicles that we normally like to look at. The Chevy Tahoe for all of 2022 is all spoken for. You can't even get one. Ford F-150 pursuit trucks, you're waiting nine months minimum from date of order and they haven't even opened that up for orders yet. Ford Explorer, we are not interested in due to, if you guys have followed local newspapers, the county and Newton PD have both sold back Explorers due to problems that they can't keep them out of the shop. So we just, they're not reliable. We don't want a vehicle that's gonna be in the shop more than on the road. Which leaves us with the Durango and the Charger. We currently have both of those in our fleet. We haven't had problems with either of them. With speaking to the officer which the vehicle will be assigned to, he said he'd rather have an SUV versus a car. Believes it, it'll be easier for him to get in and out of. So that's why we went the Durango over the Charger. Currently, the vendor we use has one Durango left, which is a 2021. The 2022s, we don't know when they'll be available. Earliest, they're thinking would be June-ish. So by the time you get one in and outfitted again, you're looking probably around July, August before it's available and actually on the road. That's also depending that the supply chain gets moving again and we can get it. That's one of the big reasons why I'm here today in October, asking for approval to purchase this in January. So it'll actually be purchased in January of 2022. We're just seeking approval to put a hold on this vehicle that they currently have. Like I said, this is a planned expenditure, it's a planned replacement, so there's no new cost that will be associated with it. Also, I will note that this will be, if approved, it'll be one check to SERVE, which is Superior Emergency Response Vehicles. They actually purchased the vehicle from the dealership at state contract price. So the price that we're gonna pay for the vehicle is exactly the same as if we purchased it from the state itself. So it won't cost the city any more money to do it this way. It's just gonna save us from writing two checks. We'll only have to write one. Do you guys have any questions?
The F-150, that's going to be kept in the city or traded in?
It will go to city maintenance. Yeah, and two quotes were placed in your packets, one showing the amount of the trade, if we did trade it in, and one without it. So, but speaking with maintenance, they said that they saw a need for it, so we'll just send it over to them.
We've all read our packages. Do you want to explain funding to the citizens?
It's gonna be paid for in part from just the capital improvement fund, which we save money into every year. And any additional over the capital improvement and the trade-in amount will be paid for by then. So additional cost, I'm estimating that to be around $6,000 to $7,000 out of VIN to finish the project down.
That VIN program's been pretty beneficial, hadn't it?
It has.
Thanks for your work on that. There's no further questions? I'd make a motion to approve the ordering and purchases of a 2021 Dodge Durango and outfitting costs from SERVE for an amount not to exceed $48,000 with such said purchase not being made until January 1st, 2022 in the 2022 fiscal year.
Second.
Got the motion in a second for this police vehicle replacement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. That carries unanimously. Thanks, Josh.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is consideration of emergency repairs to the Halsted Industrial Park rail spur. Ethan will bring us up to par on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. I guess, Councilmember Torres says you've all been apprised of this, but for, to put it out there for the public as well, there was a derailment incident that occurred on the BNS, that BNSF informed the city of on the city-owned railroad spur in the industrial park on October 13th that did cause damage to the track infrastructure and took the rail out of service and is keeping it from being utilized by Mill Creek who's at the end of that spur. We did make contact with our rail contractor McGrath LLC to facilitate inspection of the damage and begin repairs as soon as possible due to the emergent nature of the situation. The original estimate was $70,000. Once they were able to get staff on scene and do a little more investigation on all the damage that had occurred, it was necessary to do some additional repairs, particularly on the actual road crossing at Industrial Road. And so you have as handouts in front of you, two change orders since that original estimate that was included in the packet had been out. I will note to you on the first change order that ends in CO1, the back page has a $4,000 allowance if we basically allow them to haul off the 90-gauge number eight frog, which we no longer need due to the repairs. So that brought that down to, you know, just shy of $18,000 for that change order. BNSF, the track master, came out today and looked at all the repairs that McGrath had completed. They determined they would like some additional repairs before they're willing to put it back in service on there. So that is where change order CO2 comes from, for again, just shy of $17,000. So altogether, we are asking basically for you to authorize or sign off on the emergency spending that I had done in the amount of the $70,000 and then approve these additional change orders. Basically, asking for a total project now not to exceed $110,000. It is, McGrath should be able to come back out this week and hopefully get those repairs done and we can contact the NSF and have them come out again to see if they will put the spur back in service. Not, not how we anticipated spending $100,000 on the track this year, but it is necessitated because if BNSF won't certify it, then Mill Creek can't utilize it, which obviously causes them hardship and leaving the track in its damaged condition obviously presented its own set of liability concerns, which is why we engaged the repairs to begin with, so.
Ethan, does that $110,000, does that allow for any fluctuations, surprises?
Yeah, altogether, this, now with the other change order, the total comes to about just shy of $105,000, so it gives us about $5,000. In wiggle room, I will note on change order two, you can see as they wrote it, there, that one is more of an estimate based on what BNSF communicated to them. So there could be some variation there. But I think, you know, McGrath's been pretty, pretty close on their estimates in the past, so I, I think that should be enough room.
Would you like another, like 5,000 cushion? I mean, if you don't use it, it's...
I won't object to it. The way this has gone since, since the initial derailment, so.
Safe having to bring it back if it does, if you do have a bump. Well, I guess I'll make a motion to approve proposal from McGrath LLC for track maintenance and replacement of cross ties for a total project amount not to exceed $115,000. Have the motion in a couple of seconds to authorize the emergency repairs of the Halsted Industrial Park rail spur. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign that motion carries. Next item on our agenda is discussion of developers' agreement for Cedar Meadows. Let Ethan bring us into this one.
Before we get into the discussion, I'm going to recuse myself not on conflict of interest, but potential code of ethics violation.
Thank you, Sam. You wanna bring us up to date there, Ethan?
Yes. We are, yeah, this was on our previous council agenda and then we also had further discussions with the developers during a work session. Basically looking to get, I believe, the, the main issue at hand now in the developers' agreement is the financial sureties provision with the developer asking for a decrease from the, from the 50% letter of credit, letter of credit requirement that would be released at 50% occupancy. I do believe the developers are here this evening if you all would like to have conversation with them again.
Anybody on the council have any questions for the developers?
No.
Okay.
So at this point, what are you asking for? In terms of this?
In order for us to inform our bond counsel and get this, we need the developers' agreement in place to move forward with the project. So we need a, we need to know what the council wants that percentage to be so we can at least present that to the developers for their consideration, whether that's 0, 20, 50%, but what you all want. Want that set at so we can get that developers' agreement finalized and, and back to the developer for their consideration.
Well, myself personally, having been through this, with previous phases of this and being advised by bond counsel, being advised by our counsel and with Ethan, my personal comfort zone with what we're putting out there, I'm thinking 40%, 40, 60. I'd like to hear what others are thinking.
I, I won't disagree with that. I think after hearing bound, bond counsel advice, I think we're investing into the property ourselves and we, we need some assurance that it's gonna go through fine. So I would not be opposed to 40%.
Yeah, after the discussion too, I, I hinge between the 40 and 50%, but they have, they have shown a good example of what they can do. It's a lot of risk that we're putting on to the taxpayers. As it was brought to our attention, if we did nothing at all, there would still be a 15% bond that would have to be put up front, so that I'm not comfortable with 20%. But I could probably support the 40% too.
I'd like to weigh in back a little bit here. Our economy is so volatile right now and we've not seen it like this in a long time and I've been in the construction business for my entire life and I've seen economic changes happen in a breath. And with what we're going through right now as a country, I, I think we need to look at that 40% to protect ourselves, this community, and the citizens' investments in this community. I have confidence in the developers. They're lifelong residents, they're, they live here, their, their families are here. They, they want to contribute to this community. But my concern is the state of the economy nationally.
Denise, any comments?
I was thinking 30% with 50% release. I was not comfortable with the 20, but I can, I can also support 40.
I think I would be comfortable with the 40% and then 50% developed and dropping that another 50% and then at 75% go back to the same thing again to where we release it.
And I think as the agreement is stated in our workup, we can address those percentages and we can address those release dates as they come up. But I, I mean, we have to start with something.
I think tonight was about just giving a consensus and giving staff a feel for what we're thinking is what we're gonna accomplish tonight. We're not gonna actually pass anything tonight, correct?
Yeah, correct. I mean, we'll still, you need the developer to also agree and then presumably if they agree to whatever terms we would present, we'll bring that back for formal council approval at that time.
Sure.
I mean, I think even with, you know, what we've discussed previously, I mean, we're already putting money up front for, for a lot of the things, right? I mean, like we had talked about before, the gas and the water and then based off of the previous ones, we're adding in sidewalks on this too, that we're gonna eat the cost on that.
And streets.
And, and then, you know, the intersections and stuff like that too. So, I mean, we're tie, we're gonna tie up the citizens' money with that. Yeah, 40% is the lowest that I could go.
So Ethan, do you have the information you need to put together the builder's agreement and submit it to the builders?
I guess that would just be, whether there was a consensus on graduated release or full release at 50% occupancy. That would be my question.
I'm thinking the graduated. I'm comfortable with what I proposed.
And I think it's something that we can come back and, and discuss too. You know, really, I think it's based off of timing, right? So if it takes, if it takes six years to get to the 50%, then I think it's gonna be less, I think it's gonna be less of a chance, in my personal opinion, right? I think it's gonna be less of a chance to get that reduction to completely, right? That surety bond to completely be wiped out. I think if things are progressing, you know, within about two to three years and we're starting to see things flow, we can come back to the table and start talking about it again. At that point, does that council that's sitting there, sitting here, want to fully release it?
And a revision has been made like that in the past.
Yeah, yeah, we've revised that before.
Another thing I'd like to mention is that we're dealing with double, about double the number of units or lots this time around as opposed to last time.
Right.
So there's that exposure also.
Right. But their 50% is what completely is done now.
But we're dealing also with a known entity.
Yes, we are.
Absolutely.
Success from the developers and I think we ought to recognize that.
Yeah, and that's, that's the thing, right? That I feel too. I mean, you guys have had really good success out there. And that in the, you know, if somebody else was to come into this, you've already established, you know, you've already established yourselves as a, as a good steward of the community and, you know, as a developer too, so it's, you know, that's, that's one thing too. That's one thing that we take into consideration with that as well.
Okay, so you got everything you need, Ethan?
Yeah, just, I guess to, to state, to make sure, hearing general consensus for the terms you all would like to see in the developers' agreement to be a 40% letter of credit requirement that would basically, once 50% of all the lots had been improved upon, had certificates of occupancy issued, would release by half. So essentially then only requiring 20% and then at 75% complete release. We can get with our council and get those changes made and get that to the developers for their consideration.
All ready. We'll move on down our agenda. We added item number four, which is a discussion of health insurance. And I'll let Ethan bring that to the table.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Looking here to see, we got the final rates today at about 5:30 on the KAMIT plan, so we did not have enough time to, to put a formal presentation together based on those updated numbers and did not have a chance to speak with our insurance consultant, Mike Wise, on those updates and his opinion. We are having to make a decision by Friday at the latest. So what I guess I am looking for you all of, do you want us to get, I apologize, that, do you want us to look at calling a special meeting for you all to come back where I can present you those hard numbers and some of that presentation? Or do you want to, to have me or, or give me that, that direction to make this final decision based on the information available? Because we do have to, we have to make a decision whether we're gonna participate or not by Friday. And again, we just haven't had, had the chance with just getting those pretty much right before the meeting to, to put those together where I could present it to you this evening. So if you all want to weigh in and make that decision, which way we go, then we will need a special meeting at some point this week for you all to, to come and say that. Brad can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe, you know, under our form, I do have the ability to enter into contracts, especially if you guys specifically authorize me to make that decision. So we can go that way too. I just did not want to remove you all from this decision-making process because I know you all, or have been very supportive of employee benefits and those, what we offer employees, so.
Ethan, from my standpoint, with what you had estimated, and we understand it's an estimate, it's a guess of possibly as much as a 10% increase initially with decreasing costs following that. If you, as far as I'm concerned, if you get the report back and you see that is the direction that it's going, I'm fine with you making the decision.
I'm with that as well.
My uncomfort is you only have five days to analyze and make the decision. And that's not, not that I disagree with you making the decision, but that's not a lot of time.
When does the cut, the check have to be cut?
The check we wouldn't cut presumably, you know, until, until January. The, the issue they're running into with KAMIT is now that they have it, they basically need all the cities to, to participate if they can to, to hold true to what they're trying to get off the ground. And so that's to get everything they need in place with Blue Cross Blue Shield in order to hit the January 1 renewal, which we would need if we shifted off our current Blue Cross Blue Shield. That's why they need it now, because they'll basically spend all of November getting information, you know, over and, and getting these new plans set up with Blue Cross Blue Shield so that open enrollment can happen and, and we can hit the ground running on January 1st.
They basically come back and said that without the city of Halsted's participation, they're not gonna get this off of the ground at all.
Yeah, they don't know.
That sounds like a high-pressure sales tactic.
Sounds rather fragile, actually.
I'm not uncomfortable.
That's what I'm thinking.
I'm not uncomfortable with what Sam and Mike said, but I think it's, I'm sorry you have such a short term to come to the conclusion that you're gonna have to make.
Yeah. Well, Ed, but we don't, we don't have, let me, I'm gonna insert this, I may be wrong. Ethan has to make a decision to tell KAMIT that we are going to go with them if they come back with the agreement as stated before. We have until the 1st of January, if, if KAMIT doesn't live up to their agreement, that we back out and we stay with Blue Cross Blue Shield. So we've got, I think, I think we have latitude, do we not? Because we're not, we're not monetarily invested with them.
We haven't, we have not signed on the line yet.
But we may lose our opportunity at renewal of our current insurance.
Yeah, the, the big question, and, and again, I can, this would be one of our questions with Blue Cross Blue Shield is again, I mean, KAMIT is basically, they're counting, it sounded like from the email they sent, for all the cities that said they would go to the final underwriting stage to participate in order to hit how many covered individuals they need to make this, you know, a financially viable group for what they're trying to accomplish. So, yeah, there's still the possibility, like, we might say yes, but some other city that's also engaged in the same process might come back and say no and it all falls through on that end because they just couldn't get to that threshold they needed to get to to get that group established, so.
But then again, when is our renew, when do we have to have our renewal notice sent to Blue Cross for us?
Usually by mid-November, so we've got...
That early.
Yeah, I mean, we've got our renewal rates from them. We just haven't sat down and had our formal meeting with them yet to, to go over everything.
It's like very precarious.
It is.
Yeah, that's...
We talk about risk.
You know, this is a risky.
I'll say like, I wouldn't make my personal decision like this.
No.
Yeah.
I would wait till next year, next, this was available next year. I wouldn't make this decision for myself.
You can't come to us in October and bring us, bring a, this isn't directed towards you, first of all, let me say that. Bring us a proposal in October and expect us to make a decision by the end of October on something that is substantial as this. We're playing with our employees' health insurance in which they count on. So why are we making this? Now my decision changes and I'm saying no.
If I wouldn't live my life like this, I don't think we would want the city making a decision in this manner.
And, as I say, financially, like you saw, the rates did not change substantially from, from what I, we had proposed, or what we had given to you all as part of the work session, you know? So that financial picture is still largely the same, but again, it's that we knew we were going to be working with a, an expedited time window with this just of how they got, you know, the timeline needed to hit a December or get a January first renewal for all the cities that, that potentially have it. Um, but again, it's, it's unknown, um, as I said during the work session of, the, the hope is that this plan with, with larger and a broader participation offers more stability. But, yeah, it, it is technically, I mean, it's an unknown until the group performs and we can, we have the potential maybe to join in at, at a later date, but then we also run the risk if something changes within our group, we might no longer meet their threshold to, to join in that and potentially miss the opportunity.
We put, put it at risk, it, it's, it's, it's a double exposure.
Yeah.
This is something that should have been developed in first, second quarter.
It's a hard decision for Ethan or us to have to make.
Well, at this point, I think, yeah, I would, like I said.
If you decide to go this direction, you may lose the opportunity to renew at our current rates with Blue Cross and Blue Shield. If we go this rate and it works out, or we don't like it later on, we're kind of screwed.
I mean, the graphs look good, right? I mean, long-term strategy showed that the rates were still decreased in comparison to our current policy, but.
But the timing sucks.
It does. It's bad business.
Yeah.
They have a two-pronged test on this thing. I keep looking at it longer and longer. That second part, Ethan, you probably know better than I do, is the, they evaluate, um, the, the group from each of the cities, and then they also evaluate the pharmaceutical side. So you can be disallowed both ways. If you've, suddenly if you get someone who develops a chronic illness that requires some of the medications that are in that category or division two, or whatever they now call it, and they spend nine thousand dollars a month for, um, drugs, it only takes one like that in a city this size to throw you out. I don't know.
This is on the KEMIT side?
Yeah.
So it can throw us out later?
That's what I was about to ask. I don't know.
No, they haven't, and again, that's without seeing, how the agreement works, like, we have the work comp interlocal that kind of talks about how it's managed. Again, the assumption is it's going to be, you know, a modifier is assigned based on usage, um, or utilization. And I will correct myself as I reread the email. The reason the timeline is that is they're actually trying to get it. So several cities, um, back when ACA got on grandfather plans, and so they moved their renewal date to twelve-one. So they're trying to make sure that all the cities that have a twelve-one renewal can get on the KEMIT plan. We don't renew until one-one, so we have, I mean, before we would lose with Blue Cross Blue Shield, I don't think, until we made a definitive decision and said, you know, we're going with KEMIT, I don't think Blue Cross Blue Shield, because the KEMIT plan is a fully insured with Blue Cross Blue Shield, so they know they're getting our business either way. Um, I, I don't think they'll pull their renewal to us. Um, it's just, yeah, it's, it's one of those.
So we don't even know what the contract looks like?
We don't know what the, what the general.
So we don't know, we, we, so if, if I were to say, tell me in a nutshell, what I'm, what our, our city employees are going to get, you can't?
I can tell you what the plan is. I can't tell you, I can't tell you how they're going to assign, you know, like, we have a claim with our work and comp insurance. We know that that goes into our modifier and our modifier helps adjust our rates based on how many workers we have in each covered field. That is what I can't answer for the health insurance of when it comes time to renewal, how exactly will they rate the city of Halsted within the larger group to determine what our actual renewal rate is?
Okay.
Which I technically can't really give you a good estimate of how Blue Cross Blue Shield determined our rates were only going to be a four percent increase this year. I mean, we know part of it is age because the group ages, but, you know, they don't release.
Oh, but they don't tell?
They don't tell you how the overall small, small group that they have us in actually functions as a whole. They just kind of say, here's your renewal rate, do you like it or not?
Here's kind of what I'm seeing for our options, council is, one, we can tell Ethan it's a flat no on this tonight, or we can tell him to continue to pursue it, and we can call a special meeting either Thursday or Friday, once he has the details, and then we can make a decision then.
My opinion to add to that is I'd like to hear what Mike Wise has to say. I'd like to hear your understanding of it, and maybe you can do that by email and let us know. And then we can determine whether we need to have a special meeting or not after there's more background information.
There's too much unknown right now, and, and tonight it's a no for me, but when we, and if we have to have a special meeting, I'll be there.
Brad's not even drinking his A and W root beer, and I think he's.
No, I've, I've, the insurance thing kind of makes me nervous.
How's your schedule look for a meeting, either Thursday or Friday, Denise?
I should be okay.
Okay. So I think.
What's your, what's your thought on this?
I don't have one yet, to be candid, because of the same kinds of issues Ethan has. The questions that I've been able to get answered so far for several cities, it, it created more questions, that pharmaceutical evaluation and how that's handled. My presumption is that once you're in the plan, then they're just going to adjust accordingly. But how they do that, I would like to know what the process is. And with a new plan like this, I have not been provided that information, to be candid. And probably we'll see if Ethan gets it. If he doesn't, I'm still calling too and trying to get some answers to that. And there's, it feels like it's still being worked through in some ways. I'm not saying that they're disorganized, it's just that I think there's an element of chicken and egg here. The only way this works for them is with critical mass. If they don't reach a certain level of synergy in terms of number of participants through multiple municipalities, it's not going to fly.
What if they, yeah, what if they get right down to the end, one city drops out?
It's problematic, yeah.
We're all toast.
What's another year going to hurt?
At least until they get this thing up and going.
Yeah, and then, then we can have experience of the year.
Right, right.
I can't imagine KEMIT, if we approached them next year, that they would say no.
Well, that's why I'm saying if we had to make the decision tonight, it would be a flat no. But if we can take a day and get some more data.
It's too big a risk.
And next year, who's going to turn away business, you know? If, if we wanted to join a group?
Well, it just might be, like, if we would have a very bad plan year and when they would pull, they actually, that's the, we qualify, like, under the parameters they were looking for, for an insurable group. We meet that now. If we don't meet that next year because, you know, we have heavy utilization for whatever reason,
Right.
then that essentially could get us, you know, out, and that's the, or, but.
And then we would lose what we currently have with our current Blue Cross Blue Shield plan.
Yeah, I mean, once we, we know under plan design and stuff, we can make our employees or, or develop a plan that's almost identical to what our insured currently enjoy. It's the big unknown is, again, yeah, there's no, the governance of this health organization has not been finalized yet either. Um, again, IMA is, is working, and I think KEMIT's going to rely heavily on IMA's involvement. And IMA is very experienced in the field. So I'm not super worried that it's going to be something completely unknown or that we wouldn't get if we tried to join another group of similar entities. And, and we've seen, like, with our property and liability insurance, that, you know, pooling can definitely save us money or offer us stability as opposed to, um, seeking those. But as I, as I told you during the work session right now, there's giant, giant asterisk still because we're still making very broad assumptions that the group will function the way it's meant to function. It, because we don't know, and that's, yeah, when they were saying, hey, we're at this point with employees, so basically all of you that said were maybes, we really need firm commitments because without your firm commitment, we don't think we'll be able to hit that critical mass. And that's, I would hate for the benef, you know, I would hate to see this lay on the ground because we couldn't do it. But, yeah, I, it's very interesting and, and been a, been a hard decision to make. But I think we can probably get some more information in the next two, three days, um, to present that to you all, to give at least a clear picture. And if it's still no, you know, it's still no.
I, I think I'm comfortable with you gathering the data, giving us, sending us the data in an email to us and giving us your thoughts. Because if you come back and tell us, yeah, it's a good plan, let's go for it, go for it, right? But if you come back and say, no, the data doesn't look good, it's too sketchy right now, there's too many holes still in it, and we're going to lose our opportunity to renew the policy that we've got now, then choose no.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I would also, I would add to that, I would appreciate comments from Mike Wise and Brad. Yes, you guys get more knowledge about what this is.
At least, at least Mike Wise, right?
Yeah, I know it's a short, I know it's a short amount of time. What did I say?
It was nothing you said. It was a shot. It was another shot.
But I would appreciate Brad's wisdom on it too. So as he gathers information from other cities.
The, the part that was troubling to me is the, illustratively, I've had two clients, two cities, that are not even in a position to entertain this possibility. When theirs was evaluated, we currently meet the standard. Theirs, uh, in both instances, it was because they had, and HIPAA won't allow them to go beyond a certain point, but their, um, usage, the intensity of use on the pharmaceutical side was so high that they couldn't take them. And I guess I want to know how they intend to rock that boat going forward. If you're on now and suddenly we have a, as you never know, you have someone who develops a, a significant illness within the city but still is capable of working and remains employed. You, you have massive, uh, bills on one side or the other. What does that do to us? Um, a lot of insurance carriers put you in that category, and we're just not going to continue to insure you. Well, I'd like to know, is there greater security with this organization because it's made up all, of all these municipalities or not? Um, and I don't have that answer yet.
Yeah. And if that happens to another city, how does that affect us?
Yeah.
On our rates? It's not just, just us, it involves multiple.
There's a regression analysis they utilize in this.
Being in a pool.
I don't know how.
I look forward to your information that you glean over the next few days.
Okay. And I will say too, Brad, that if you did call Blue Cross Blue Shield and said, how do you evaluate us? They, they won't tell you.
No. I've been through that before.
So, so you're asking them to provide you with something that we can't even get from a current.
I'm just looking for, not so much as the, the general nature of that, but what happens if you do?
Yeah, we just know Blue Cross will raise our rate by forty percent or drop us.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, seriously, yep.
You got everything you need to continue on with that, right, Ethan?
Yeah, again, I'm operating from a consensus basis here, uh, but basically I'll talk to our, our consultant, Brad, you know, on the legal side, uh, get, get data, um, send that out all to you, um, and, and based on that, kind of make a preliminary decision if, if a special meeting is warranted. And if that's the case, we'll try and get something called. And if not, we know the answer is no, and I can tell no without your approval.
Then you need to start working on that next motion that I'm getting ready to ask for.
Yeah.
So that's going to finish up our new business for this evening. And we do have one more executive session, uh, scheduled this evening. Or is that two more?
That's two more.
Okay, we've got two more this evening, and I'll entertain the motion for the first one now.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I move that the Halsted City Council recess into executive session for thirty minutes to discuss pending contract negotiations pursuant to the consultation of an attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, exception KSA seventy-five, forty-three nineteen B two. And ask, and ask that in addition to the governing body, the following persons join the governing body in executive session, the city manager and the city attorney. Um, the open meeting and governing body to reconvene in the City Hall Council Chamber at eight-thirty-five P M.
Second. That long. I had a motion in a second to, uh, move into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, we'll move into executive session. Prove same sign. We'll move into executive session.
We are back from that executive session. Is there any action to be taken as a result of? Seeing no movement from the council, we'll move on to the next item and it's another executive session. So I would entertain that motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Halsted City Council recess into an executive session for 15 minutes to discuss possible real estate acquisition within the Halsted city lands. Pursuant to the preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real property, exception KSA 75-4319B6, and ask that in addition to the governing body, the following persons join the governing body in executive session, the city mayor and the city attorney. The open meeting and governing body to reconvene in the city council chamber at 8:52 PM.
Now.
Now.
We have the motion and the second to adjourn into another executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The same sign, we are moving to executive session.
Thank you.
We are back from our executive session. Is there any action to be taken as a result of? Seeing no movement from the council, we'll move on our agenda. The next item is report section. And we'll start with the governing body, and I'll start with you tonight Denise.
Bethan from this end tonight.
Sam. Fall is here, things are getting pretty. Keep your leaves picked up. Don't blow them in the street, right? Mike?
I'm good.
George?
No, sorry.
Ed?
I do have one thing. I want to give kudos to the maintenance department for crack sealing on the, some of the new asphalt roads that we had done a year or two ago. The crack sealing is important because it prevents water intrusion to the underlayment and also the freeze thaw problem. So I think we've done a lot to preserve the investment that we've made in the streets. So thanks, Pat.
The only thing I've got tonight is I'd like to remind everybody that our Halloween howl is Sunday evening. I believe that's correct. And I've got two four-year-old grandsons coming up from Wichita to spend that with me. So I'll be downtown and look forward to seeing everybody down there.
Are you going to be carrying a bag?
Probably two.
We'll move on to our manager report. That's you Ethan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Safe Routes to School Phase One report is in the final stages from Lochner. Any governing body comments or suggested edits on the report, please send back to me by the end of this week so that report can be finalized. Lochner has committed to honoring the terms, you know, in the original agreement, helping with the next application phase, even though the updated timeline now has that in summer of 2022. But they did say they'll help us with that next phase. And once that report is finalized, we will make it available via the city's website. City will be receiving some additional American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funds. Originally, the city was to receive two disbursements of $154,816.59 with one payment made in June this year and one payment in, or excuse me, July of this year and one payment in July of next year. The city will be receiving an additional $921.05 this year. And next year's received funds then would be up to the matching $155,737.64 again, that we would receive sometime in July of 2022. The ARPA funds do have four main categories of eligible spending, and the city has until the end of 2024 to obligate those funds. Future work sessions are planned to be held on the possible and best use of those funds for the city of Halsted. And as staff, we continue to participate in both league and Kansas Office of Recovery meetings and trainings regarding updates on the ARPA funding. But as they finalized, it became apparent that all of us were going to get an adjustment, and ours was positive. The city received words that, or also received word that it will receive an additional $3,717.11 in funds towards our storm siren project from the Hazard Mitigation Grant that we applied for to offset those costs and were previously awarded. The increase in cost was due because the project did go slightly over our original project budget, estimated budget due to some additional radio upgrades and electrical work we had to do to achieve optimal performance. So we're happy to receive those additional funds and get that back into our capital funds that paid for that grant. The INA access control project and camera systems are about 90% complete. Staff did end up adding an additional door for access control. And we are still waiting for some final wiring and cabling to come in so they can finalize that project in its entirety. Everything is working. I think we've got the door scheduling and all that figured out. But we just need those few minor adjustments to finish out the project. And then the mayor and I did meet with Halsted Hospital owner Ozzy Reckus and discussed his ongoing efforts and potential plans for his properties. Items such as the overall care and maintenance of the properties were discussed, and both parties agreed to continue communicating with one another about concerns and potential uses or opportunities for the properties here in Halsted. Harvey County EDC is also working on some updated marketing materials and information that can be used by the city or Mr. Reckus when discussing that property with prospects. And that is all I have to report to you this evening.
Counsel, anybody have any questions for Ethan? Hearing none. That concludes our agenda, and I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for adjournment. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those same sign, we are adjourned. Thank you, counsel.